This meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust, meeting April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five, is being held by Zoom according to Governor Baker's order and Governor Healy's extension of said order.
Uh, you want me to read it? Uh, Fred, do you want me to read it?
Well, you don't have, I mean, I don't even think we have to, but you know.
I was told we do.
All right. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, uh, general law, chapter thirty A, section eighteen, and Governor Healy's March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five revised order, extending remote participation by all members in a meeting of a public body. This meeting of the Great Barrington Housing Trust, Affordable Housing Trust, will be conducted via a remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by the public and our parties with a right or a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website and at the top of the agenda. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. All votes are roll call, agenda, call to order. So, uh, we'll go through the people who are here, uh, and please acknowledge, uh, Bill Cook, please. You're here? Yep. Amanda?
Here.
Christina?
Here.
Peter Most?
Here.
And Fred Clark. Uh, I don't believe, I suspect that Garfield is at the town manager, uh, interview, which is, as Peter has mentioned, is happening at the same time. So, uh, we have the meeting minutes from February. Uh, let's see, what was the date of that, February?
February eighteenth.
February eighteenth.
I move, we adopt those minutes.
Second.
Second. Uh, roll call, any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Bill Cook, yes, no? Amanda?
Yes.
Uh, Christina?
Yes.
Uh, Peter?
Aye.
And Fred, yes, aye. Uh, the meeting minutes are adopted. I will turn this over to you, Amanda, for the meeting, if you like.
Our next agenda item is, uh, the ADU pilot. Tonight, we planned to, uh, debrief the process to date at the last meeting, um, where since our March minutes aren't available yet, um, for members joining us, uh, the board accepted the recommendation to, to fund one of the applications that met the highest score. The other applications received were incomplete. Um, Jane Rolfe is with us from Construct. We'd also asked, uh, Chris Rembold to join us, but he had a conflict tonight. And, um, our goal, as I recall, and feel free to chime in, others who were at the meeting last month, our goal was, um, to make sure we're doing a deep brief of the process to date before we consider, uh, what we want to do going forward. Um, at one point in the meeting last month, I think that there was a question raised about reo, you know, opening, uh, reopening the applications for a second round. So, uh, before we have any conversation like that, we wanted to debrief with, among the board and with our partners, and my recommendation would be that we, we do seek out, Chris, at a time that he is available to, uh, loop him in on the conversations as well. So with that said, I will open the floor, um, to Jane and, uh, invite you, Jane, if there's anything you are bringing, um, for us to hear about the process from your end as the subcontractor.
Sure. Am I still unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. I'm being much more careful about when I'm muted and unmuted these days. First of all, I commend the Affordable Housing Trust for taking what has been a good idea in many communities and actually creating a pilot to see how it could, how it could happen and what kind of support it needs. So I think, I think that's commendable and, um, as pilots go, I think the fact that we had, uh, several partial, um, applications and in the end, two complete applications, um, and one that, that we felt rose to the level that, that it met enough of the elements of the rubric that it was, it was a worthy project to fund and that it would provide the additional housing, that, that's part of the goal of the whole project. So it, it really ticked all the boxes. That said, as a pilot, you know, we didn't know what we didn't know, um, and we found many more questions about, how the construction could be done, needed to be done, uh, requests for, for really, um, us to advise them on the process and that, that we felt was beyond the scope of what we had agreed to do. And I also think it's really hard to be the advisor on how to construct something and then also be the evaluator of whether they're doing it. Um, so I think we ran into the one application that, that we, um, recommended funding, um, with someone who was not on the lowest level of the income scale, but had the highest level of, um, expertise in building and was able to present something that, that again, like I said, ticked all the boxes in terms of there was a financial need. Definitely this could not be done without this kind of support, um, but had the wherewithal just himself to, uh, do the construction, um, more or less on his own. So, so the, the, the two types of candidates we had were the ones who either didn't have a financial need, but had the wherewithal to build something, or had the financial need, but really didn't have the, the wherewithal. So I think if there would be a way to, um, to address that so that, that there could be some kind of help for the pre-development phase, I guess I would say, I think that would make a lot of sense, um, even if it stretches out the process. The other thing, I think we, I think together and especially with, with you taking the lead, the rubric was very clear about what the, what the, what need, what needed to be met to be a, a project that we would recommend. I think what we didn't do as good a job, both sides of the equation, is really make sure that we had a communication strategy and a timeline that, that was the same, uh, that we all agreed upon. Um, and I think that that's just the nature of, of a pilot. You don't necessarily know what you don't know. Um, those are the big things.
Thank you.
Happy to answer questions.
Uh, Fred, were you raising your hand?
I am. Uh, Jane, thank you very much for taking this on. I know, uh, we're in, you know, as you said, in a pilot in uh, unknown territory a lot of ways, and I really appreciate it. But, um, can you, I was not at the last meeting, I was away. Uh, can you tell me how many total applicants you, uh, got either full or partial?
Um, it was under ten. I don't have those notes with me. We had two completed, and I want to say five or six that were, were partial.
And what would
In addition to that, probably had another several just kind of, um, requests for information, kind of what is this? How would it work?
Right. And what, was there any kind of theme to the partial applicants? Did they like, you know, have everything except their financials or have everything except their construction estimate or?
It was more the construction side of it. It was, it was, here's what I'd like to do, here's the vision I have, but not the, not the, kind of, not how you get from vision to actually completing it. And so we didn't feel like the, the rubric gave us space to fund something that may have been a great idea, but didn't show that it was feasible.
So it's
And
I guess, I guess the other thing I'd say is, is some of the partial applications and definitely some of the brief phone calls our staff person had, were folks who didn't really understand the full grasp of what was trying to be accomplished. And so it was like, I would really like to build this so that my mother-in-law can come stay with us when she's here in the summer. And that we didn't feel that type of thing was, was what, in the spirit of what was intended. So that it needed to be permanent housing, that it needed to help alleviate, um, the, the need for more affordable housing and that it needed to help make the property that, um, the existing housing remain more affordable for the owner.
Were most of the projects, uh, new construction or were they renovations of existing space?
Renovations of existing space.
Like somebody had a garage or something or, uh, you know, a, a part of their house that didn't have a kitchen or something?
Yeah, yeah.
That's good to think
And, and honestly, I, I think, sorry, go ahead, Amanda, I can't hear you.
Um, I, I just think that that's good to think about. It might help us with some marketing messages, knowing that
Yeah.
it is kind of take something that you have and, and renovate it.
Yeah, because
Right, and what I was
I just said that it's much cheaper and probably much more affordable to do something like this.
Exactly. That's what I was gonna say, that to fit the income guidelines, um, and to be able to complete a new construction really would have been cost prohibitive, I think.
Okay, um, you mentioned you had some communication, uh, issues, uh, and there were issues of, uh, understanding what was asked or what, what, what was needed for the whole application. I, I gotta say, I tried to log on to your website during the process, uh, because we were getting some feedback from some people, and I'm not sure that the link was to the app. I mean, there was a lot of information on your website, but the, how, how prominent it was displayed or how easy it was to get to, uh, was difficult. It, it didn't seem like you could, it wasn't, um, intuitive, let's say.
That, that's really helpful feedback, because I think, I think there would be some easy ways we could make sure that link is available that goes directly to that page, um, in the future if we were to do this again. So that's, that's really helpful.
There was an incredible amount of, of detail on your, uh, uh, website. Some of it, maybe you had to go into different, you know, you had to open different windows here and a different window here to get things. And it might have been easier if there was some way to, um, synthesize some of that into one document or, uh, put a, you know, a general thing together. That, that was my, um, critique anyway, was that there were almost too many things that were buried. One more link down, even when you got to the affordable, yeah, I'm sorry, the ADU page, um, there. The way I ended up going into it was I went into the, um, the Affordable Housing Trust website that Bill maintains, and Bill had a link to the Construct website, which I thought was very helpful.
Exactly. I think, yeah, and I think we could do more of that, so it links directly to where you want to be. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Regarding the communication issues, I mean, we got involved and I ended up talking to Denise, uh, well, exchanging emails, and there was a lot of confusion about the timeline. Uh, I guess, um, someone said that there was, uh, conflicting information that Construct was receiving.
Um, I, I, the only specific I have about that was, um, whether it was a three, three-month window for application or not. And we, we were under the impression that it was, and so that's the information we were giving out. And, and I'm not sure that necessarily is consistent. The other thing is that before it was even launched, we had people calling us about how can we build a tiny house. So I think it's just, that I just think is the kind of, of secondhand communication that happens in small towns, where people hear about something, they're excited about it, and they want to get involved. I don't think we can, I don't necessarily think we should try to control that, but I think, it, it left us feeling a little flat-footed.
What I would like to say from our end is that I, I witnessed in different email stream, uh, threads, conflicting information going to Denise, and I know you and I, Jane, did touch base and clarify everything about what, everything about the project was written out in the overview, and that's what approved, and that's the framework we're working with. So it was a three-month window, and I think the step that we could get clearer on is, were we to do this again, when we select the date that we're gonna open the window, that, that we identify the closing date and we advertise the closing date too?
Exactly. I think, yeah. I think having more of that, just, yeah.
Yeah. It didn't get identified as a date, like, it's due on this day, um, or before in our, in our collective communications to the public.
Correct. I would agree with that.
And I think that we should have, uh, a finite window for applications if we choose to reopen this, because I, I don't really think that we have the funding for rolling or, or, or the knowledge at this point of, of doing.
Right. This isn't like your down payment assistance that could, can be accessed, um, more generally, yeah.
I, I, you know, we did fund this at a hundred and fifty thousand with the maximum grant to be one hundred thousand. And the discussion amongst the members of the trust was that we were hopeful that, uh, more than one uh, project could be funded during this cycle. So I mean, I was hopeful that even if we awarded a hundred thousand to one project, that the, that some other projects that maybe weren't on the same scale might also fit into that, um, overhead that we had, uh, funded the project for. And I think if we did, we could probably learn something different of having one project at thirty thousand and another thought, a project at a hundred thousand may, you know, reveal different, different answers.
Absolutely. I also think just the timing in terms of, of the national stage politically has caused people to be really cautious about where they, where they, you know, whether they spend money or not. Um, I think just there's too many, too, so much uncertainty that I think the timing in that regard, um, was unfortunate, but there's nothing we could do about that.
Is there any way that, I mean, can you have, do you have any suggestions, Jane, about how we can help with people? You, you mentioned that there were two kinds of groups. There were people who were financially, qualified or financially, uh, would benefit from this, uh, but didn't have the technical ability to pull it together, and others that had the technical ability, but not the financial need. And I, you know, we, we wanna, we wanna help the person who, you know, is struggling to stay in their home, to meet their rent and, um, doesn't really have the means to, um, install a new bathroom in order to rent their apartment, but really needs that income, a, a, a tenant would bring in, uh, there. And I guess what I'm asking, it's a very long way of asking, but can you come up with some suggestions of how we could, I don't know, have a navigator or a coach or something, you know, maybe, you know, do we need to fund a little bit more staff time so that somebody could work with somebody with a, a partial application and sit down with them and counsel them or, you know, does that need to be
Yeah, again, if, I think if you're asking us to be in an evaluative role, having our staff also provide guidance on how to complete it seems counterintuitive to me. I don't know if there would be another housing organization that could take that part of it, um, or if there's, if there's contractors, for example, who would be willing to have that kind of a conversation. I think, I think that's more what's, what's needed is have, having a conversation about, you know, um, just the, the, the demands of doing whatever they're trying to do from a contractor's perspective.
And then I know you have your hand up, but I just want to continue this. I guess what I'm talking about is, if you could, I, I, I mean, I don't see a conflict with Construct helping somebody to understand and figure out what is needed on the application, because
Oh, we definitely did, we did that.
Adversarial. I mean, it's, you know, it's, let's get it all done.
No, in terms of what the, what the, uh, understanding what was required, I, I think we, we definitely did that. But helping them then fulfill those requirements was what I thought I heard you asking, and that's the step that I don't think would be appropriate for us to take if we were evaluating applications. And to be honest, we wouldn't have the capacity to do it short-term. Maybe eventually we would, but in the near term, you know, we're, we're too stretched to do more than the evaluation, uh, phase.
We can revisit that part. I, I'm not finished. I, I mean, I don't want to drop that. I want to, you know, see if there's some way that we can figure out how to, you know, improve this program, but
Sure.
I don't, I don't want to spend the whole time, you know,
Yeah.
on the same issue.
Well, and
The one thing, let me just finish one thought, thought on this. The one thing I could imagine us doing is maybe providing like the opening of, um, the next period, if you were to choose to do it again. Uh, it's some kind of webinar or even a face-to-face, um, session where, where there is more conversation generally with, with all the applicants or anyone who's interested, where, um, folks can feed off of each other and get ideas. We could potentially have some contractors there who could answer some of the more, um, you know, the technical questions, so we wouldn't be necessarily guiding that.
Um, is there a possibility that, uh, either some members of the committee of our trust or our group could look at a completed application and sort of look at an ideal application? I guess it would have to be redacted.
Yeah, that's because you wanted to, because that would then become public, um, you know, that, that, yeah, I'm not sure that would work.
Right. Something. Done.
Um, I just wanted to, from a process point, point out that, like, I think that the value of doing a debrief is that we can hone in on these issues and that we could, you know, like, we are getting the information that allows us to tweak where we want to tweak, add things and, and make decisions about what we want to do next. And so, um, you know, I think it's good to have ideas. Now we have Jane, it's good to, you know, bounce them off of her and see what, uh, their brain has to offer, and like, we don't have to settle on it tonight. So I also just invite, um, Peter or Christina and Bill into the conversation. Are there questions you have or this is also our, like, this is also a group conversation around the, the debrief so far?
So I had no idea that Construct took on that particular part of actually re, uh, receiving the applications and, and, uh, working through them. So my question is, uh, so our, our role now is only to create the program and to give the money, yeah?
Yes, and to decide if we want to continue the program, if we want to change it.
And based on Jane's, and did we actually give anybody money?
So last month, and the, the minutes aren't available yet, so you wouldn't know this, but last month, um, we reviewed the recommendation to, uh, the recommendation to award, um, a, a single grant, uh, and we reviewed, we had the score, uh, Construct provided us with an overview of how the application scored on the rubric, and we accepted that. And so we've, uh, I immediately notified both Jane and Chris Rembold, so that the process can move forward from there. So it is
I, I would
oversee the implementation of that process, um,
And how much money did we give?
We awarded one hundred thousand.
And what I wanted to say is that we didn't, we, we only make recommendations as construct. And I think, you know, I think we assumed that the process might be different and we might have, might have had three viable candidates to put forward just as an example, and, you know, would list the amount of money that they needed, and then you would choose, you know, what to do with it if, if you couldn't fund all three, for example.
I, I want to point out that this is a loan, not a grant, and it's a forgivable loan, which means that if they stay there for ten years, uh, it is forgivable, but it is, it is not strictly a grant, a, a grant. It does have, uh, payback requirements.
And did we decide, um, the hundred thousand was based on, because we, before, we were not completely sure how much money we will, we will be, uh, awarding uh, for each participant. It's based on what money we have, et cetera, et cetera. So how did you decide to do, is that the money that they requested?
It is. We, we just put forward the request and recommended that it be funded. And as I understood it, it was, it was any request up to a hundred thousand.
And to Fred's point, you know, if, if there had been other viable applications, we might have been looking at,
Okay.
you know, a ninety thousand dollar one and a, and two thirty thousand, or, you know, we don't. And I think that's one of the questions the pilot asks is, would we get a mix of size project or not? Um, and I think, you know, part of what I'm hearing in the conversation tonight is that we, I wouldn't, is there's not enough information to know that we wouldn't get smaller. What we know is that there were potential applicants who struggled with presenting information that would be, um, that could be evaluated for project feasibility.
So this was the most feasible application?
Yeah, this application, I mean, we had, I just, I don't have it up, but we, in March, we had, um, a, a really nice summary from Construct that ranked, gave it a score in each of the areas of the rubric, and it came out in, I think, fives in almost all of them, with the exception of the, the landlord homeowner's income. So it wasn't
But also, in, in doing the math, it would have been hard to do this project up to code
Right.
with, with less money. I mean, that's, that, that is, I think, gonna be a challenge.
But I think, you know, to the, the community's question about, like, tiny houses.
Yeah.
I am assuming you didn't see any applications for that, and in general, there's a thought that they could come in on a much smaller scale. And, um, so for me, I'm just taking that in as, that's one on a pros list to why we might want to do another open application window before we make decisions about the direction of the, you know, changing the program or anything, that, um, it might be worth it just on that alone to try to see, to test again, are there some smaller scale projects that people would apply for if we were creating the right kind of support?
And also, um, I just want to make sure, because Jane mentioned, uh, you wouldn't be able, they wouldn't be able to complete it with less money. So, um, we, we're not necessarily funding the whole project that people
Oh, you did refund the whole project. The, the owner was gonna need to take out a loan in addition to this.
Yeah.
Uh, Peter or Bill, anything you'd like to contribute?
I can't hear.
I can't understand you.
My computer system is a little glitchy at the moment.
That was good.
That, much better.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sort of set up strangely, but anyhow, um, I thought it would be nice to have two or three contractors who would be open to being contacted by people that are thinking about this so that we could direct them to somebody who could explain some of the technical aspects of the construction and what would be required and that sort of thing. that sort of thing.
Is that permissible? Are we permitted to, as a government entity, recommend? Or should we just have a list of contractors that have contacted us that might be available for questions?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, I, I think we'd probably, uh, want to avoid a recommendation, but, you know, that does, like, that does make me think about two things. One, the idea of having a panel of contractors, like as part of a webinar. And also, like, if there are any contractors who know they wouldn't take on a project of this scale, but would want, they, they, but might want to offer this as a public service to their community. Like, that could be a good match for us as a public entity, somebody who's like, I'll, I'll donate my expertise to help people understand what this requires, but I actually do high-end projects and I wouldn't pick this up, right? And then the other thought I'm having is, you know, over the course of talking about ADUs on Zoom for a couple of years, there's various resources that are away that are ranged from, you know, projects with prepackaged plans and stuff like that, that I never was able to really look into. But Bill, I think you and I got a, got some of those, some things that Chris passed along. So I also wonder if it would be valuable for us to take some time to gather those resources and kind of see if any of them could be help, any of those resources would be helpful for people trying to understand how they can, um, work on the feasibility part of the project.
And I remember in the last meeting, there was a guy, I think it was a government, Massachusetts government, that were off, also offering a, some kind of grant loan type of thing, that I asked a question if they can be combined. And I was told, yes, they, those can be combined. That grant or whatever it is, is on, uh, our website. So did that, was, was that kind of, uh, com- called, communicated to the applicants in any way?
So the grant you're talking about is administered by the Berkshire Regional Planning Association, and it's just for, uh, code violations, I believe. Pretty limited lin- income, uh, limits as well. As I recall, it's fairly restrictive.
I remember asking the question, and he said, absolutely, that they can be combined. You know, we can supplement.
What Fred is saying is that while they could be combined, it would be a very small portion of applicants potentially be in a circumstance to combine them.
Okay. But yeah, the ones that have much less, uh, resources could be helped.
Um, it's seven oh nine, so I just want to be mindful of people's time and, and, wrap this section up so we can move on. Is there any last thoughts anybody would like to share or final questions? Jane, do you have questions of us?
No, I think this has been really helpful. And, um, I do want to reiterate that I think starting with a webinar or a face-to-face gathering is kind of a kickoff that could get some attention as well as provide the education. Could be really useful. It's what we do with our receivership project, uh, which is also a kind of complicated process. And it, it really makes a difference.
That's great. Um, anybody else before we close this section?
No, thanks.
Um, are there any members of the public who have any questions that they would like to ask? Jane, before we get off the, the sec- the section? Um, thank you so much, Jane.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Jane.
If, if you could mute me, I think I'm going to stay and just listen.
Do that right now. Fred, are you okay with us, uh, changing the order and going to the RFP rubric?
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right. Jeremy, I'm adding you and I'm pulling up.
Hi.
Hi, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
People see that, okay? So for a recap for people who weren't here in March, or maybe joining us, um, as members of the public. In anticipation of our coming fiscal year, uh, starting in July, we're working on some preparatory work around potentially releasing a new RFP. That would be for nonprofits or other developers seeking to create affordable housing. And I don't know, I just made you all disappear. Okay, now you're back. Um, and so what we've done is we had a previous RFP that we had used in October twenty twenty-three. Is that right, Fred? And then we're taking, we did extensive work on the rubric for the ADU pilot. So we're taking the ADU pilot rubric and we went back to the RFP we had previously used. And we are starting to work through blending the two into, in a, into a specific rubric for a future request for proposals for, uh, developers and nonprofits. So you'll see at the top of the draft that's up on the screen, you'll see the goals from the, um, ADU pilot still, that will need to be updated when we turn to really focusing on the RFP itself. But for now, we're, we're working in the rubric section. We took out the, uh, I'm getting feedback from some
Yeah, sorry, that was me. I was just logging on, on a desktop.
Great. Um, we took out the residency requirements that were related to the ADU. We did make it, we did note that when, if we, if we choose to re- reopen an ADU, we might want to revisit the wording. But, uh, so basically, the eligibility is that the property has to be in Great Barrington. We felt that the project viability, um, scale from the ADU was a good fit for the RFP. We wanted to add a category capabilities consistent with the scope of the project. I think that reflected one of the things the previous RFP had identified as an assessment area. Um, and then if we're moving into three here, this is where we wanted to bring Jeremy in, who's, who had previously collaborated with us as a member of the planning board, um, when we were working on the ADU pilot. So, um, item three is about, uh, evaluating the proposed living space, the quality of that space, based on the extent to which, um, it's an appropriate living space, looking at square footage amenities, natural light, and environmental quality of materials used. And so I think Jeremy specifically wanted to consult you around the, around how we might think of the square footage. We, the ADU was kind of confined by rules about ADUs. And so that's, that's where we wanted to start by bringing you into this section. Christina and Fred, I hope that helps you feel like you're a little up to speed on what we're looking at.
Yes.
And then I think my job from here is to type and ask questions as I type.
So I guess, this is Fred. Do we need to put square footage numbers in? Or, uh, is this a? Is it beneficial for us to put square footage numbers in? Or, uh, can we do something that is less, uh, quantitative and more subjective? Well, I mean, the text does cover that, has some, you know, minimum kitchen versus, uh, kitchen plus, uh, for instance. My first question is, do we need square footage?
Like, right here, like, this text is identifying, we're talking about kitchen.
So why are the, the footage, uh, is crossed out?
Because, so we knew that we would need to take out the ADU references, because that's a really small space. Be limiting, like, on this RFP, the space wouldn't be limited to such narrow amounts. Be deleted it. I'm, I'm open, I think that, that we did, we had identified in the ADU process that the amount of space, not just what's happening in the space, the amount of space was part of what we felt should be evaluated.
So do we want to do it in terms of rooms? Or just, you know, bigger is better?
Yeah, because it could be one, one bigger.
Says, you know, the minimum size for a, a bedroom, you know, is, is a minimum size of a room is seven by ten, I think.
Uh, Jeremy, were you gonna add something?
Yeah, well, actually, I, I remember the, the code is quite small for, for what the minimum is.
You know, for me, uh, to actually say about the rooms, is not as important as how big is the space. Because, uh, possibly some people would like to have just one open space. You know, like a studio design and no any, any particular other rooms. So, so how would you, how would you then evaluate if you actually ask for size of the rooms if somebody wants? Like, for example, I would like to have a one big space with just a bed- bedroom in, uh, just a, um, kitchen and, and bathroom. That's it. One big open space. And I think I would like to, somebody have a possibility of building that. And when you start to put sizes of rooms, that limits the possibility.
Um, Jeremy, were you saying that there, were you saying that there is a minimal allowable square footage that we could still use as the lowest ranking?
Well, I, I don't know if you, I don't know, excuse me, I don't know if you want to use it because it's so low. But aren't what, aren't what you're saying here is, isn't this just total square footage? Like, total inhabitable square footage? You're not really talking about rooms here.
Well, I think Fred suggested that would be one way to approach it.
Oh, I see.
Um, and I think that did, we did talk about that last month and we did, we didn't land on that. I think that's a live conversation. I'm also reflecting on hearing Jane say how helpful the real, the clarity of our rubric was. And so, you know, like, again, since it's about being able to rank things on a scale, if there is a minimum, it might, you know, that might, that might give us, like, that's the bottom line. That gets the lowest score.
Well, I mean, and, and I, if you want to do that, I would just say minimum to the code. Because then if, then you don't need to change it if the code changes.
Yeah. So that would look like that. Um, and is that minimum different than the ADU minimum?
Uh, I, I believe, I believe it is. Unfortunately, you don't have one of the architects from the, uh, from the planning board here. So I have to look it up.
Well, I mean, you're still bringing valuable framework.
I would think that if that's the minimal standard for a dwelling unit, there would be for the ADU or for
Yeah, but if you're talking about, um, if the minimum for, um, like a bedroom, I, I believe it's, I think it's smaller.
As a room. But we're talking
If you're talking about overall.
Yeah, we're talking about overall here. You know, there's a minimum for a room, if you're going to have rooms. What Christina was talking about was having just a studio with, uh, no defined, uh, sleeping space, other than the, the, the general, uh, space in area.
Yeah, I mean, I wonder if, if it's really complicated, if you're going to start to define, because I, uh, if you're going to start to define like each room.
It is. And, and because we, we don't want to limit it that way. We want to have a qualitative difference that is graded from, uh, meets minimum standards to, you know, exceeds the standards and meets best practices in every aspect. Uh, and so I think it's easy to come up with one and, uh, five. What are the ones in the middle that grade out, you know, between those two?
What would you give in five, Fred?
Well, I, I think that it has, rather than, like I said, quantify the square foot, you would talk about, um, has generous spaces in every, uh, aspect or, um, living area exceeds, uh, minimum standards, uh, and, uh, has lots of natural light, has, uh,
I mean, we
That's already clo- included there, so.
We're really just trying to figure out the, how are we thinking about space? The spaciousness and, and what guidelines are we giving ourselves as evaluators to consistently evaluate it?
You know, I mean, do we want to, that, I mean, what, what issues, yeah, exactly. What, what, what is valuable to us? And, you know, are two bedrooms more valuable than one bedroom? And where do we capture that? You know, if, if there are two projects and one has, I mean, maybe it's somewhere else where it's talking about the number of people that are, are living in the apart, uh, the unit. But, um, how do we evaluate? There you go. Secure housing for the most people possible. I mean, I think that's a great standard is to, to, to have that there for, for multiple people.
Do you, when you're evaluating the living spaces, do you want to add more things? Because like, uh, things that might affect, like the quality of life, um, so like maybe noise. I don't know, um, I mean, I'm trying to think of a situation in town where you would be next to, next to something that's, and yet, and then how do you evaluate it?
Well, right underneath it, it's, you know, in terms of environmental design and construction, it, it you know, and then what we're talking about is, you know, fresh air ventilation, natural light. We're talking about, um, uh, visual, uh, you know, uh, comfort, but also, uh, so I'm not convinced that square footage is the way to measure whether a so, I'm not convinced that square footage is the way to measure whether a space is better than another.
Um, so let's zoom back to that then, so we have, like, what we're trying to, to evaluate is the, the the overall livings, the qual- the overall quality of the living space as a whole proposed. And then we've broken that down into four areas currently. Square footage, amenities, natural light, and environmental quality of materials used. Is there a reason to say, well, square footage was appropriate for ADUs because it's such a confined space? That, that, that looking at it in that very um, quantitative way is helpful, but in, in an apartment, um, you know, in the context of this, that has a much broader array of options that we could be evaluating, that it would be better to talk about the spaciousness instead of square footage?
Isn't this somehow related?
It is, but one is qualitative and one is quantitative, and, and I would lean
I don't
that, that those are the that, that's, that would be my preference.
But how you, would you, in a proposal, how would you evaluate spaciousness, how would you type spacious without square footage?
Well, I mean, I think it are we asking? You know, I think in the ADU, it means we're asking for, you know, we're, we're asking for, uh, a certain level of design to be presented.
Well, we'd be asking for design in this too.
I, I, I am very opposed to the, the part that says um, that the best, the, the most, the strongest proposal would be more bedrooms. Because that, again, implies only a family. And there is a huge amount of people here that are single and single seniors and all kinds of people that, uh, wouldn't want to have three bedrooms. And, uh, yeah. So, wouldn't like that to be as a, as a valuation.
Oh, Christina, that, um, that we, uh, we put under impact. And so, like, my response would be part of what's valuable about working with a rubric is one proposal might be really strong in areas one through six, but not rank high in seven and still come out the overall highest proposal. A proposal might be lower on some of the other ones, but be very strong on seven, and we might say those are the two proposals we want to fund, and it
I, I understand, I, I, I didn't think about all the, you know, uh, adding all the proposals, all the rubrics.
Because I agree with you that there's value there is value in need for housing for families of all sizes. And I also think it's important for us to be thinking about how we have the greatest impact with the small, with the small amount of funds we have available. So Fred, if, I'm just trying to think, like, if I put up two ways, if I put up like the the quantitative and the qualitative version of how we might look at this. Um, we'll say like that, that's what the quantitative would look like, and then the qualitative would, would sound like what, Fred? On the weakest? Like confined? Living spaces in all rooms.
Can we use, looks like a closet?
I don't know, most closets are pretty spacious.
Oh, I wish.
I guess I would say limited living space is extremely restricted or limited or, uh, minimal. So
I'm
I, I get your point. That it's difficult to then put the qualitative
Yeah, because I think
uh, guidelines in words, because you know, everybody's gonna want to score fives or whatnot. There's nobody's gonna score a two or a three or or something, you know, because how do you do? Living space is restricted, but a little bit bigger, um, I mean, you know, I can fit a couch and a chair instead of just a chair, I don't know. Has, you know, various seating areas, uh, what's better?
Well, this is what I heard you say before.
spacious.
I'm sorry, I need to ask this question, even though it might sound stupid. Um, what is the difference between RFP and ADU?
Uh, the ADU is specifically for the accessory dwelling units, and it's specifically targeted at, um, at loans for resident, like, current resident homeowners who will become the landlord, landlady. Um, the request for proposal is a general request for proposals that a contractor could respond to, a nonprofit could respond to, um, to create housing. So, um, like, I think the example from the past is that we funded the Curletti project.
Yeah, but that was exactly like ADU would be.
Would
No, there are apartments, there are two-bedroom apartments.
Oh, in one house, oh, okay.
So they're, they're, basically, that project is building two, two-bedroom apartments.
Mm-hmm.
In a separate building.
That house.
On a separate lot.
Did they finish it, by the way?
I don't believe it's occupied right yet.
I think it's very close.
Very close.
Go regularly and get updates, but, um, so, like, the living, like, then, if we set a five is and to me, like, a five is not like, okay, they meet they meet a base, a basic baseline, it's like, a five is really, really good. You know, um, so that the, the living spaces are spacious in every, you know, and that that's true in every room. So I, you know, like, when I think about using the quali- the quantitative, I, that's where I have a hard time, like, what would a five be in, if, in quantitative terms? So, I don't know, that's my, that's, that makes me lean towards where you are, Fred, and using a more qualitative measure.
Um, so in this case, uh, would actually, the truth would be that if, say, um, you know, the proposal is for five bedrooms. So it could be that they, they provide um, five bedrooms, but in a separate bedrooms, se- separate apartments. So I think that could be a very good, uh, um, evaluating point, you know, that they they are actually working on more bedrooms, you know, more apartments.
The total number of units?
Yes. And we don't have this here, at this moment.
So that might be so this might make sense to say here, like, per unit is one, and then another line under impact is total number of units.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think the guideline should guide us, that is, you know, the likelihood to provide housing for the most people possible. I know, working with Habitat and the Grove Street House, that was the rubric that they used. Uh, so that the successful applicant had more people living in their house than any of the others.
But we won't know, you know?
We won't know, and, um, I'm not so sure that we can know when a developer comes and says, I'm gonna build a two-bedroom apartment, um, how many people are gonna be there, but we have the capacity for you know, more people.
I mean, would we like to see a developer come in and build one five-bedroom unit? Or would we rather have them come in and build five separate apartments, five separate?
Exactly, that's what I'm talking about.
I think that it's not like, I think that we answer that by considering all of these other aspects as well, right, because it's not just one, you know, five-bedroom unit, it's what is the quality of that five-bedroom unit, is it cost-effective, what's the location, what's the affordability, like, you know, does it match our affordability on AMI? Does, uh, you know, does the person making the proposal have the capacity? The capability to do the project, is it viable, right, like? It's not it's not just one determining factor that would get us to the answer, I think. And even, like, thinking about, I know we're kind of toggling between how do we deal with the spaciousness issue and the impact issue. But, um, even with, like, the total number of units included, like, we made if we look at our precedent, we looked at two projects that, one of which was gonna provide two apartments, two, two-bedroom apartments. And one of which was part of, I mean, like, what did the, uh, cornwood have? Like, thirteen units? And going through our process at that point, we didn't, we didn't end up funding based on which project had the most units. The other thing
I just look at the, look at the units, and lots of them are like two hundred square feet, and really small and really expensive for it.
And that's my point, that, like, I think that the total units included in the project is something we need to consider in our evaluation, and it matters, and it can be an important part of how we get to impact, like, the largest impact, but we already have experience with knowing that that's not, um, that alone is not always the best way to make
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
It's still nice to know.
Yeah. Um, Peter, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Just didn't want to lose you. Um, so let's, let's try and tie up this, uh, living space thing. Uh, can I just get a, um, show of hands, people who would like to lean towards numbers and square footage? As the evaluating measure?
I would like that, but
Okay, and, um, show of hands, people who would prefer to go with the, the qualitative, which would be the second example, living spaces resisted uh, restricted, and on the other end, it's spacious.
Couldn't we have? Couldn't we include both of those things?
We could, if we include both, though, we need to, and it sounds like we're kind of split. So, um, then I'm gonna throw it back to, let's take another five minutes and try and work out, well, what would we what, how would we articulate the squ- the, the numbers and square footage in this evaluation?
Well, we, we start with minimum allowable, I mean, I think that's, you know, uh, where we're going to, to, to start with. And
That's like a hundred square feet per person or something, a hundred and fifty square feet, feet per person, something like that. And it's really small.
It is. And, uh, you know, I think maybe, you know, number five could be exceeds minimums by two hundred percent, say. Uh, so that you have a reference of hey, this one's twice as big. And maybe in between there, a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and fifty percent, or something like that, I mean, that's, uh, an easy quantitative
Yeah.
ladder, if you will.
And we could actually figure out what those square footage numbers are. Just throw them
And I, I, I would argue that exceeding the minimums by two hundred percent would, by definition, be generous.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, like, Bill was saying, uh, one person's a hundred. You know, how does that work out? Uh, I mean, a typical apartment's gonna be seven hundred to eleven hundred square feet, something like that, twelve hundred
Sorry. I'm lost.
Is that a bat?
HUD standards, there were HUD standards that we used to use that were, uh, minimum property requirements, and they were HUD. And I remember just doing, um, affordable housing in the eighties. And we had it all down to a science as to how to build to the minimum uh, standards at that point. That was in HUD, that wasn't in, uh, the state building code. Uh, and I could look those up, I can.
So, would you be willing, Fred, to look that up, and Bill, would you be willing to look up the, the, or confirm your what you recall for the square foot per person?
I think I was just taking that off the top of this rubric where you had you go up.
I, I will look it up, and I will look up minimum.
But this I, this, a good, a good, like, we can resolve this with what we have on the table.
Yeah.
I, I
So I think, um, you were right, in the seventy square foot for the minimum.
Seventy square foot person?
It's, it's a room, I don't think the code defines it by the person. I think they just, uh, uh, are defining what a habitable room is. And so it's a habit, so a habitable room has a minimum square footage of seventy square feet, and, um, I think a seven-foot ceiling.
Correct.
And, and then it, you know, then there's minimum hallways and things like that as well.
Yeah, and it has to have light and ventilation, um.
Yeah.
Don't have
To be a bedroom.
To be, yes.
Uh, uh, sleeping or
All right, so, I mean, that was a journey, but I appreciate you all for going on it. Um, it's seven forty-five, Fred, there were other things you wanted to get to, I'm wondering, you know, if our goal is to have this done by July one, I'm wondering if it doesn't make sense for a small group to work on this between meetings and, and come back with, um, a full draft.
I think so, um, and others could work on parts of it if they're more, uh, I don't know. Is it the kind of thing that you, you need to look at it overall to see if it's viable? Because you might be, uh, putting somewhere else, so. Anyway, I, I've already said that I'll look at the minimum property standards, uh, and follow up with that.
I, um, I have a very full work commitment for the next month, so I couldn't take on Commitment for the next month, so I couldn't take on something outside of this meeting until after that. Which, I mean, it could still get done between May and June, but um.
Well, what would you like to see done for, this is uh, April for the May meeting, um. What would you like to see done? So uh, May is the eighteenth.
Yeah. Um. I mean, I think that. Our, you know, our real. I think that what we talked about is wanting to kind of be on track. To have this prepared for the start of the new fiscal year. Um, and that means we have work to do on the RFP. And work to do on the rubric. Um, it's possible all of that can happen. In June, I, I just think group processes will slower than.
What I'd like to see us do is resolve the rubric by the May meeting. And spend the. June meeting working on the RFP. And with some uh. Parameters or edges. For what kind of awards we would be talking about, assuming that uh. Town meeting approves our, the CPA recommendation.
I have a one, one more question. Is there going to be uh? One of the rubrics and probably not, but I just want to make sure about the rents, the proposed rents for the.
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think we can do that. We, we have started talking about that as AMI and, and, and to jump in if I'm incorrect. But um.
Yeah, that's the category and then we haven't fleshed out what. Any, like, what the.
In general, you know, we can go up to a hundred percent AMI. Traditionally, a lot of uh, affordable housing has been much less than that. Even down to forty percent AMI or sixty and eighty percent tend to be uh. Breakpoints, so we can use uh, that reference. To talk about what the affordability is for the, the rent.
Yeah.
Uh, so I think that's something that we can work on directly.
Yeah. Um, so are there, are, are there two or three people who could work on this between now and May then? I would normally happily volunteer, but I can't list them. Uh, Fred?
Yes.
Uh, I can put some time, but. My work on my farm starts, so. Uh, limited time, but I could put some time in it.
All right, I will send.
Even if, you know, one or two of us could write and then a couple people could.
Read and.
Could read it and, and say, okay, this doesn't make sense to me, or it's not as strong here.
I'm happy to be in that ladder group.
Yeah, well, I, that was tailored to you, Peter.
All right.
I was thinking of a task.
Off the document, you all.
Let me edit.
Yes, edit. Um, yes, if you could send a, an editable uh, document.
Yeah.
And Jeremy, thank you very much for your input. Uh, it's really helpful. I mean, I think that. This board is a natural to work in conjunction with the planning board. Uh, on this and other projects.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for having me. Um, yeah, I agree. Definitely.
We appreciate your cottage zoning thing.
Yeah. I know, so we'll see. Fingers crossed. Yeah.
Um, in terms of the rest of the agenda, um, I don't have anything more than I told you on. February about the um, ball field uh. If I would refer you to the minutes that we. Approved earlier this evening where I talked about it then. Bill, can you spend a minute or two just talking about the um? Idea of uh, donated property?
Well, we, before we move on, though, I would like to talk about the ball field.
Okay, talk about the ball field.
Um. At what point do we stop waiting for a response from the folks at the state that were asking for technical assistance and? Decide to craft our own process?
Yeah.
Well, um. They've already provided the input that they're going to provide. So. The ball is in our court.
So should, should we be spending time talking about what we're going to do about the ball field?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Um. Can we have that be? A chunk of time in our May meeting? So I think, you know, what we talked about is having a. Creating a process that has a, that front loads a lot of public input before we start decide, like. Creating our own vision of what we want to do.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much, Fred.
Well. Wasn't that something the state was going to help us set up in these public meetings on?
Uh. They would help us set it up, uh, they won't pay for it.
Can I just mention once more, uh, I did. Tell Fred that, uh, but I think everybody should know. That uh, I talked to somebody in Berkshire community, Taconic Community Foundation. And there's a couple um, grants that we are allowed. To apply and not only allowed. Uh, we have. We are preferable for the grants. One of them is. Technical and planning assistance, which is only once a year. And the other one is a community something, community, um. I, I'll find out more, uh, and let you know, um, Fred. Um, and that one is raw, on a roll. How do you call it?
Rolling bases.
Rolling basis, so, and. They love affordable housing, okay? So we have a big chance to get the money from them.
Okay. Um, I will commit to making at least an outline of what a grant application would include. And what we would need the money for, how much we would need money for.
Like, for example, technical and planning can actually pay for the. Uh, grant writer. And they actually have a lot of money and uh, there's lots of restrictions, but it's a, it's a good grant, uh, but. It's only in the beginning of the year. Uh, I think it's, uh, the deadline is in February.
Whoops.
Yeah, so that's the technical planning, the community support or something. It's on a rolling basis, so we can apply now and get the money. You know?
Well, the ball field's going to require two or three steps. Uh, as Ananda said, we wanted to have some community input. Before we uh, move on, and at that point, we would be looking at. Crafting a full feasibility study.
Mm-hmm.
Prior.
You can pay for that.
RFP that we would be uh, issuing. So I think your idea of that is a good one. For the feasibility study. To give you an example, I think we spent. Close to fifteen thousand dollars. For a feasibility study. Uh, for the North Plain Road Habitat site. So that, that, that's the order of magnitude that we're looking at for a feasibility study, but. That may not happen. Soon. There's a lot of steps to go through before we get to that.
Fred, were you hoping that the, the technical, that the technical assistants would? Have funding for feasibility or was? Like, what was your hope when you were look, reaching out to them?
Oh, my hope was that they would be, they would provide a facilitator. For uh, community input meetings.
And they will, but they won't pay for the facilitator?
They will help us to hire somebody. They, they do not offer that service. They will provide a infinite amount of staff time in the office. But, so they're willing to look at things, review things, provide help with that. But only if we uh. Send them things. They're not, uh, they're not interested in having somebody come up. They would help us to uh. Identify somebody to be a facilitator, and I've got a couple of ideas.
Well, and I was going to say, like, we also have, I think we have a good. Like, there are, there are good facilitators locally who can. Facilitate a community meeting and um. If that's what we're looking for.
I think that's the first step that we're looking for, and we could use somebody like Hearthways. Or um, there's a couple of other people that I have in mind. Or uh, somebody that you may uh, be aware of.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking, oh, I mean. Deb Phillips is retired, but she's very good at this kind of thing. Um.
Rosa, Rosa Zuborosa, whatever her name, do you know her?
I don't.
I, I think that with, it's premature to start talking about.
Like, the uh, the Rural Health Network um, is. Very interested in. Well, hey, uh, no, I'm, I'm a volunteer with them. The Rural Health Network is very interested in convening. Community spaces around. All of the social determinants of health, and this might be the kind of thing where they can, they can come in and offer support for a process around affordable housing. That is a community convening, um, so I think, I think there's good local options and.
Sure.
And. Rural Health Network might not need to be paid.
Okay, well, I think that we probably. Want to at least think about uh. Some. Agency or person with specific housing. Uh, experience. So.
Say more.
Anyway.
Let's say more, what is it that um, you would see as really helpful? With that exp- expertise?
Oh, um. Being able to facilitate uh. Ideas about how the space can be manipulated or um. Utilized to its best advantage. Uh. With the idea of fitting into the neighborhood, fitting into the context. Uh, being affordable, providing the highest quality of. Living uh, spaces for people. And um, you know. Somebody like Wayfinders out of Springfield would be a possibility, um. Uh, that worked with CDC on um, some projects. Um, Hearthways is a, is a possibility that I could think of. But what I'm, what I'm thinking about is somebody who could. Understand the balance of the number of units spatially with the quality of life.
Do you want to get some quotes to bring to, to the May meeting for further discussion?
I, 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 no. I've already got a full plate. I cannot do that as well. Uh, I'll try, but I, I.
I can try and work on that too.
Yeah, mostly I'm just looking for, for like, what's a concrete next step that gives us the information we need to start moving? This along. So, Bill, if you're able to do that, that sounds like it would be great.
Yeah. I'll see what I can do.
Um, and Bill, I think I had promised last month to connect you with some folks in the development world who would. Be able to just chat with you about planned giving.
Um, yes, and.
I let that slip to my mind. I'm happy to do that, um, if you want to connect one-on-one.
Yeah. Almost connected with uh, Kelly at them.
Yeah.
Or almost there.
Might be a good resource for that as well.
I ended up having just a lot of questions. To bring back to the group as I was going through what. What we need to do to accept houses or whatever. I think we need a. A gift policy of some kind. Which we don't have, and I would need help putting together.
Yeah, I think that's the kind of thing that exists that we could like, find some examples and then that could be the, that could be a template for us to think through.
Right.
And then we, it would need to go to a lawyer.
Yeah. Yeah, so. Yes, I was thinking basically with, you know, constructing the CDC, but they. Mostly want gifts of cash. But um. I may try and connect with somebody at Green Acres too and see. What they do. Um, there's a lot of questions I have, but I don't think we have time to. Delve into that right now.
Um. I work, one of my colleagues uh, previously focused on planned giving when he was working in Florida.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to connect me, then. We have very, very specific. Questions, I mean, do we? If we get a house that, you know. Needs a lot of work? Is that something we want to accept as a gift, pay to get it renovated, brought up to code? There's a lot of questions that I think.
Did that on Grove Street? We did that with the tax-taking house that the town allowed us to take.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Um, and. If Habitat hadn't been willing to sort of step up there. You know, would we have been able to bring it up to code? Would we have been able to raise the money? Is that something we really want to do? You know?
Well, houses in that neighborhood are going for a lot now.
Well, yeah, houses are pretty much everywhere.
Are we talking about some specific house?
We're talking about the idea.
Okay, sorry.
But we're also talking at Christina about the idea of um. Basically inviting people to. Plan to um. Leave their house to us in their estate.
Um, may I suggest to invite? Somebody from Berkshire Taconic. To give us some info, because they constantly dealing with things like this, with donations, they, you know, and they. They have uh, expertise in this, and I wonder if they could assist us. With some information on that.
Yeah, I don't know, like, I don't know if that makes sense to bring them to a meeting, but I think it makes sense to talk to them.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to talk to a, a friend that I have there and uh, ask her, what should I ask her? Should I ask her? Whether they are willing to consult?
I mean, I think. Uh, Bill may have other things, but I, if they have a sample um, policy for planned giving, that would be valuable.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Are we moving on to trustee speak?
Fred?
Uh. Yeah, I think that covers our agenda. It's now eight oh five, uh. Ken, uh, yes, uh, Peter, did you have something you wanted to uh?
Well, no, I'm so glad you asked. Um, so I'm very disappointed to report to everybody that. We are not going to be able to have a town meeting this year. A consid- consideration of what should have been considered, which is, which was the property tax exemption proposal that we worked on. A, a great deal of time in uh, November and December. It um. Uh, I, I have sympathy for the town. There are a lot of issues that are front burner, and this didn't end up being. Front burner. Um, it's a terrific proposal. It, for those that are listening and don't recall. This would have given an exemption to uh, individuals or entities that were proposing. To utilize part of their property. For an affordable housing unit, so that if their property uh. Um, round numbers, uh, had a property tax of ten thousand and one third of their property would have been. Uh. Reformed to be a, an affordable housing unit, then they'd get a one-third tax exemption, and we proposed a certain amount as a limit to this program. And we were hoping to jump. And we were hoping to jumpstart uh some affordable housing units. And I wanted to get off my chest that I am distressed that uh. You know, months have passed and we weren't able to get this done. And um maybe for the for the next fiscal year, not twenty-six but twenty-seven, we can get this done.
Well, let's hope because.
For the town meeting. It's not gonna be on the agenda for this town meeting? It is not gonna be on the agenda for this town meeting. It it um even though when speaking to select board members, they were in favor of it and um. And what have you. On the other hand, we should of course note uh earlier today, we're trying to get a new town manager. And Chris had a lot on his plate and couldn't push this through and um so you know, there were circumstances. But this is a, this would have been a valuable program, useful program. It wasn't asking a lot of the town budget.
What about the progressive tax uh property tax?
Uh we should keep this to trustee speak and not discussion.
So Peter, are you all set with uh? Do you have any other comments?
Um, no.
Are there any other trustees who would like to make a comment?
Christina.
I I was just asking about the, I I don't know what comment about what.
Anything you like.
Well, I just what Peter said reminded me about that we were working on the progressive tax uh. Uh ex- exemptions, you know, so is that, did that go anywhere? Which people who have less money have many pay less tax, uh property tax.
Are you referring to the uh residential tax exemption proposal?
Yes.
That also did not move.
Really?
Well, I don't think the select board has made a decision yet, have they? No, so that um my understanding is uh the select board has asked the assessor. To um analyze it and the assessor was engaging um a a individual to give consideration to that. Um and and that is likely to to occur for some period, not to occur for some period of time.
Um the trustee comment I would like to make is um just. I also share your disappointment, Peter. Um and. I'm also thinking about other other things coming out at the state level, including um. I don't know what they're calling them, the the towns that are, you know, the towns that have the option of being designated like a tourist town and.
These are all these are community designation.
Um say that again.
Seasonal community designation under the under the 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 Home Homes Act.
Um I just wanna say, I do think it's really important work for the Affordable Housing Trust to be doing to be looking at these frameworks. Coming out at a state level as options and identifying um. The specific elements of them that could impact housing and making those policy recommendations to our community, so.
Any other comments?
No.
Uh any members of the public, if you would identify or raise your hand, I could allow you to speak. I don't see anybody. So uh the next meeting is the third Tuesday in May. Which I believe is the twentieth. Uh we'll send an agenda out.
Um uh Fred and Ananda, before we leave, uh may I ask a question? Um Ananda brings a a good point. Uh Great Barrington. Uh is not designated a a seasonal community under the Homes Act because we don't have. Forty percent of our homes owned by second homeowners, but communities in the South Berkshire County. Um can apply. Uh we we're at twelve percent. Is that something that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund should be looking at? And if so, should we be adding that to? The a future agenda as to whether or not it would benef- benefit our um. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund a- a- with our mission of affordable housing. Because there are advantages under the Seasonal Community Act.
I mean, I can say for myself, I would really love to learn more about the. The elements of that act that impact housing. And then I I do think it it would be good for the Affordable Housing Trust to familiarize ourselves with that. And based on that, make a determination, is this something we should be making, we should be pushing for and making an argument for and. Um and I think the continued kind of question we have is how do we, how do we do that advocacy effectively? Um.
So I think there's two parts to that. There's the information of understanding what's going on. Uh the and then the application of how we can do it, and as you mentioned, advocacy uh or facilitation. Is, you know, I I think many of us believe over the last year or two. That the role of the Affordable Housing Trust should include advocacy uh and education.
So would it be helpful, um much as we did with the um the. Tax exemption, which hasn't proceeded, we'd set up a subcommittee where we analyzed a question, which was a state statute. And then came back to report to the entire trust. Would it be useful to try to um set up a subcommittee to analyze this question? And then report back to the subcommittee and hopefully with a better result than we had uh recently.
I I think it would be helpful to have one or more people. Following some of the initiatives. I know that you and Bill and I and maybe others. Are on some of the information sites and go to certain seminars and webinars. Uh about housing issues and follow uh Secretary Augustus and all that. Uh and I think it would be really helpful for us to, one, report, you know, take some time at a meeting, perhaps in June. And talk about some of these things that are 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 happening. Uh on the state level and how and two, how they can be applied and used for our our benefit.
Okay.
Um I.
I'm I'm willing to be, I'm willing to be a member of a subcommittee if anybody else wants to join me. Otherwise, it's a very lonely subcommittee.
It's a subcommittee of one. Um I, Ananda, I'm thinking June for this. Because May is already filling up unless we wanna have another meeting. We also need to do a mandatory um. Reorganization after the town elections.
But we have to reorganize in July. If we do it before July, we have to do it again in July.
Uh, okay.
But yes, I mean, I think that in June we is a good, you know, June is a good time to be talking about the budget. Cause the, we're in between the new fiscal year and the town meeting, and I do think that um. You know, like, why not split that meeting between. Thinking about advocacy and organizing ourselves around advocacy and budgeting.
Yeah, and I I like the idea of having meetings that can go in depth on particular issue. And I think that June is a good time for that. We could talk about the upcoming fiscal year and how we we see that playing out. So. Okay, everybody um.
Peter, I'm I'm booked it through mid May, um but. Let's, why don't we, why don't Fred, why don't we in at the May meeting come back to who could be on the the subcommittee? Cause um hopefully Joe will be able to be here and we'll have, we'll. Have more people to kind of know who's interested.
And then maybe, let's hope, some more clarity from the state too.
And is Joseph uh gone? He's no more on that?
No, he just was unable to come tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, everybody, anything else? Anybody, anybody at all? Good night then.
Good night. Thank you so much.